Morning ladies and gentlemen. Now, switching all my phones off please. Thank you very much. Item number one on the agenda. Cut out the minutes of the last meeting please. Thank you councilor. Second of the minutes.
Second of the minutes Chair.
Thank you councilor. Item number two, declarations of interest.
I wish to declare an interest Chair. Can I move on?
Hold on a minute.
Just sort of assisting with the... Thank you Chair. Well assisting sort of helping this to be clear and as orderly as possible. If you're on a governing body, you should declare the interest. But as is the motion particularly blatant to council tempers motion is about a consultation, then most governors are taking the view that they'll declare the interest but they won't necessarily leave the chamber and they'll participate in the debate. If you or your significant other, that means spouse, civil partner, or someone with whom you live as though they were your spouse or your civil partner, is a teaching assistant, then you must declare the interest and you must leave the chamber when we reach that point because that is multiple peculiar interest. You can participate in the debate too so it is a criminal offence. If you have family members, so nieces, nephews, in-laws etcetera, or close associates who are teaching assistants, then because this motion relates to the withdrawal of a consultation which will affect their terms and conditions, it affects their wellbeing. Anybody looking at you might take the view that because of your interest you're not really able to take a clear view of what is in the public interest and so you'd be well advised to declare that interest and leave the chamber. I'm going to hand you back to the Chairman now because what she's going to ask you to do is if you're going to declare an interest, first of all give your name loudly clearly, then what the interest is and so that Ros can commit this properly. Thank you.
Right, obviously we've got a lot of people in queue. Can I ask you if you could please press your button to ask a question on the handset so we could log who's who in the order that you want to do now so it helps Ros out?
Which button do I press Chair?
Ring.
Just press button. Just stick your hands up. Right. If you start over there.
Thank you Chair. I will be declaring an interest. I'm a governor of Peterborough. By the way.
And what? Hold on, hold on. Just getting on the hand. Can you see in here clearly please because some people speak without making room for it.
Counselor Art.
Counselor Derek, sorry Governor.
Patrick Conway, Governor.
Michael Bell, Governor.
Chair, I have a direct query on the interest of me leaving the meeting.
Andy Turner, Governor.
Council Martin, Governor.
Counselor Stelling, Governor.
Fraser Tensley, Governor.
John Carr, Governor.
John Hart, Governor.
Andrew Harrison, Governor.
Ivan Juneau, Governor.
Owen Brown, Governor.
Christine Cox, Governor.
John Lindsay, Governor.
Switching bell, Governor.
Trish Pemberton, Governor.
Heather Smith, Governor.
George Richardson, Governor.
James Rollinson, Governor.
Sarah Iverson, Governor.
Such as saying they still give me a belief in me.
Can you use my phone please?
Helen Carr, Governor.
Frances Smith, Governor.
Heather Levell, Governor.
Thomas Navy, Governor.
Paul Milburn, Governor.
Carol Hampson, Governor.
Joan Shaw, Governor.
Jim Clark, Governor.
Kevin Shaw, Governor, have a credit for the interest as well.
Leo Chair, Governor.
Eunice Huntington, Governor.
Janice Mesa, Governor, Kim Rea, Chesa Wood.
Rob Purk, Governor.
Sonia Foster.
Jennifer Bell, Governor.
Paul Schröder, Governor.
Sue Morrison, Governor.
Karl Marshall, Governor.
Peter Brooks, Governor.
Mike Dixon, Governor.
Neil Foster, Governor.
Amy Tomlinson, Governor, with a peculiar interest will have to leave the room.
Maria Pliss, Governor.
Jane Brown, Governor.
Lucy Johnson, Governor.
Chair, I want to declare an interest on item nine. If we've got to the end of the...
Oh wait, hold on a minute. I'm going to... What? I'm going to sign it. Or you do this again.
I need to declare an interest on item nine as a member of the board of the Palanqu Health Community Partnership, please.
If remain, I'm a governor too. Is that everybody declared everybody's interest in all items on the agenda?
Yes Chair.
Item number three, Chairman's Announcement. First I'd like to place on record my personal congratulations to the leader of the council, Councilor Simon Henick, who has awarded the SABE in the Queen's New Year's Honours for political and public services. My congratulations. My congratulations are also extended to other recipients in County Durham, including Kenneth Ball, station manager at Concert by a Station, who was awarded the British Empire Medal for services to fire and rescue in the community in County Durham. And councillor Wunia, or Billy Hill, a Houghton Parish councillor, who was awarded the British Empire Medal and had contributed a decade of services to the community and charities in Houghton. Councillor Hill was a recipient of the Chairman's Medal in 2008 and was also recognised in Queen's Diamond Jubilee celebrations in 2012. East Durham Area Action Partnership had also previously recognised Billy for his outstanding voluntary efforts. I'm sure you'll all join me with congratulating Simon, Kennedy, Billy and everyone else in County Durham who's recognised in the honours list. Finally, as you will be aware, our chief executive of nearly seven and a half years retires at the end of this month. This will be George's last council meeting. George was appointed Chief Executive in 2008 and has been Chief Executive for the new County Durham Unitary Council and led the reorganisation of local government in County Durham. I think it's appropriate to bring in each group leader to say a few words. Counselor Henick?
Thank you very much Chairman. Chair, can I pay my tribute to George Garlic, who has served as Chief Executive of Durham County Council at a centre which became a unitary authority in April 2009? Indeed, his appointment came within weeks of the initial 2008 elections, the process and salary levels having been previously agreed by the International Committee of County and Districts, which allowed the newly elected council to move within weeks with a swift appointment process, for which I have to say there was fierce competition from more than twenty sitting Chief Executives. I have never doubted that we made the right choice back in 2008. George, you already demonstrated his leadership for many years at the Unitary Stockton Council and previously in senior roles at Humberside in Cumbria. It is often forgotten just how potentially fraught the transition from eight councils to one in County Durham could have been, but I still have visions of chief officers asked to sit at reception desks on Vesting Day in April 2009 with their feet up as nothing much happened, which was regarded as an early success. Since then Durham County Council has become a well-performing unitary authority despite the more recent massive nationally imposed budget cuts and was awarded the prestigious Council of the Year Award in 2014, just five years into our unitary existence, an accolade which eluded George at Stockton but which his career and record richly merited. I'm sure I speak on behalf of all members of this authority, present and past, when I thank George for all he has done for Durham County Council, local government in general and the North East. He will be missed by all and although I am yet to meet anyone who is fully retired, can we wish George all the best on his retirement and every best wish for the future. Thank you.
Now for what? Would you like to say something?
Yes Chairman, I can't believe it's seven and a half years George. I remember the first day I met you, you came up as a candidate for the Chief Executive of the office here at Durham. We had to be allocated a councillor to accompany you around the tour of Durham and that councillor was me. And I remember the pair was getting on that minibus, boy was it a minibus, the pair was... I know it was seven and a half years George, we haven't put a great lot of weight on but it was cosy I'll tell you. Just as well we had some things in common. You've been here at a time where local government has had unprecedented cuts in the way in which the government has put these cuts to Durham County Council. In my opinion, and I'm sure I speak for the group, you've done an absolutely great job and I'm just here to take the team and get over these cuts and get the Council of the Year assignments, mention that and other things. It's been fantastic. What I'll miss the most will be our one monthly meetings. The last one being tomorrow George, two o'clock, primarily for your knowledge which is incredible but also accompanied by your humour and wit which is absolutely outstanding, your retirement is brilliant. George, I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of the Durham Independent Group for you and your family to enjoy your retirement and good luck.
Hold on, hold on, hang on. I'm asking him to pull his microphone off. Thank you. Back on the watch. Amanda, would you like to say something?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of my group, I'd like to thank you, George, for your support and assistance you've given to all members during the time here in Durham. There's no doubt when you took over your post that you could have predicted the challenges that were facing local government and what's transpired since. For us as non-executive members, you've always had an open door policy and for that we thank you. And I hope that you're going to have plenty of time to spend with your family and for a long and happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you Madam Chairman. Much has been said already so I will be brief. I first met George, I think over ten years ago when Teasdale Council was putting to special measures to use if you're not sent there. And I said to another councillor, who's that bloke? And they said, it's George Garlic, he's from Stockton and they say he's very good. And that was all we really got told about it at the time. But since then I think we have proven that to be the case and particularly we must recognise George's great achievement in welding those eight authorities into one, without which I should have to think local government would have been like in County Durham now had the funding cuts come through on the old structures. I've always thought George to have that rare quality of wisdom which is born out of experience I suspect and many battle scars and he's also, he's always struck me as being a man of sound judgement, yet he manages to retain a certain enigma. And so I must raise this question today because many members have asked it over many years, what is in the bag with Jack Waterford? It's all cancelled. People have speculated, is it Zinky Baker? Has it been Pat Dunche? Today's crossword, she's in the pot of scotch in case no one just gets too much of it. Will we ever know? Thank you very much George for your service to the council and from our group. Much power to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much George.
Thank you Chairman. I think after what's been said, I think it's the closing of one chapter, a new chapter opens in first of February and wish you a healthy retirement.
Counselor Armstrong, Chair of Scrutiny.
Thank you Chair. George, I would like to wish you and your family health, wealth and happiness in the future. Can I thank you personally for your guidance that you've given to me over the last seven and a half years? I really value it. When you took this council to Council of the Year, you're leaving on a high, right? But every non-executive member realises the value that you were brought to this authority. And we thank you very, very much George. Thank you.
Can I ask the council to join with me in thanking George Garlic for his hard work and dedication and for his services to local government in County Durham and wish him a long and happy retirement?
Well Richard, the answer is my forty-five page speech is in the... No, I'll be very brief because this is a council meeting in a very important event. Just to say many, many thanks for all the kind words that all the leaders and Joe and the Chair said. It's been a pleasure and an honour to serve in Durham over the last seven and a half years. I think that we have collectively done some wonderful things. It's been the most challenging time you could imagine, first of all unitary authority and then austerity and coping with both of those and I think you coped magnificently with all of those. It's been a superb council and in this context I mean the collective of the members to work with and to work for. And you've all, you may think that sometimes you have your differences but by the standards of most of the councils I've ever worked in, you are impeccably behaved and completely polite towards each other and all of you have the best of County Durham in your hearts. So thanks ever so much to absolutely everybody, all the members of the council and may you continue for a long time to do your work in Durham with the same skill, sensitivity, social conscience that you always share. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Item number four, the Leader's Report. And as the leader of the council, to produce any report please.
Thank you Chairman. I'm pretty free this morning. I just would like to thank members of the many of us who sent their kind wishes on the awards announced as part of the New Year's Honours List. As I said at the time, I very much view this as recognition for all the hard work carried out by all members and officers of Durham County Council and all of our partner organisations over the eight years since our preparation for the unitary local government's gathering pace back in 2008. This has been a very challenging period for us all, first with the merging of services from eight councils into one and since 2010 dealing with unprecedented spending reductions imposed by governments as part of the National Austerity Programme. It has felt like a period of constant change but through it all, our staff at all levels have never complained and have continued working hard day in, day out. This award was given for everyone who has played their parts. Thank you for that Chairman.
Thank you for that Counselor Henick. Does any member have any questions on the report? Counselor Hawke?
Yeah, Chair, I don't have a question, I just would like to place on record my group's congratulations to Simon Henick for his award.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to note the report? Item number five, questions from the area action partnerships. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services to explain the procedure regarding the AAP questions please?
Thank you Chairman. There are two area action partnerships, three questions today, Spennymore have to put one question and Durham Valley have to put in two questions and the representatives of each AAP will be invited in turn to ask their question and the relevant portfolio holder or leader will respond. No discussion will take place on the matter once a question has been answered, no supplementary questions will be allowed and replies will be placed on the council website. And on the basis that everyone understands the procedure, I now hand it back to the Chairman so that she can invite the first representative to put their question.
Thank you. First question is from Spennymore Area Action Partnership. Can I invite Michael Brooks, AP foreman, to ask their question please?
Thank you much Chair. The question on behalf of the Spennymore Area Action Partnership is as follows. It is, the current market and promotion of the Kindred Extravaganza in Bishopmore alongside the other attractions currently being planned for the town, e.g. the Spanish art gallery, indicate how Bishopmore is set to benefit from investment over the coming months and years. Can the council let us know if there are plans to ensure that surrounding towns, e.g. Spennymore, will also benefit from this investment and the potential for a huge increase in visitor numbers to South West Durham? Thank you George.
Can I ask Counselor Neil Foster to respond please?
Firstly, I thank Michael from Spennymore AAP for that question. I'm very pleased to welcome the opportunity to comment on the exciting proposals and developing Bishopmore, where we anticipate major increase in visitor numbers into the wider south Durham area. Bishopmore will start to receive an influx of visitors from this summer with the opening of the Kieran in July, where there will be fourteen night shows planned over the summer months. We'll also see significant increase in the visitors to the castle and the other planned attractions will be opened in 2018. Both the eleven artists chosen to be offered in castle are directing potential visitors to the visit camera Durham, visits Durham website, to book hotels and make accommodation across County Durham. Accommodation providers within Spennymore will be able to offer these visitors organised accommodation, although I would like to stress how important is the accommodation providers are registered with this Durham. Should they need any advice and assistance to take for visit camera Durham, we'll be delighted to assist. Spennymore itself also has a rich cultural and arts heritage, which with the support of cultural and sports services, we hope to develop in order to add to the emerging offer across South West Durham. We're just really aware to look at the artist grill, restaurant and RDB, the county's most famous artist, or Cornish. Together with the support of both the settlement, the gallery and the mining museum which are currently in operation in Spennymore. There will of course be opportunities for jobs, opportunities for training and opportunities for volunteers to engage in visits. These we hope will be a benefit for only to the people of Spennymore and right across South West. So we'll be working on these and other projects to ensure we can make strong links to develop those taking place in Bishopmore, indeed to engage about active events that are going to take place from Durham City right through to the boars in Barnet Castle. We hope by extending this exciting offer, the attractions and impressive Spennymore will also be included. We are starting to receive interest in developments that are keen to develop in Spennymore in order to benefit from the wider south of Durham opportunities. So overall, I hope we'll be able to see strongly going with growth at the back of these developments.
Thank you for that Counselor Foster. The next two questions are from Durham Valley Area Action Partnership. Can I invite Rosemary Moore, Vice Chair of the AAP, to ask their third question please?
Thank you Madam Jay. The first question is, over the past year, access to services and social isolation in respect to older people living in the Durham Valley has moved up our agenda. The Durham Valley Partnership has financially contributed to and supported a number of new local initiatives such as the Durham Valley Diners, offering one-to-one social interaction and a nutritional meal for older residents. And our Making Connections IT project has provided learning opportunities for older and more isolated residents to access services online. What does the council feel the Durham Valley Partnership's key role should be in relation to supporting older people in our local area?
Can I ask Counselor Lucy Hollins to respond please?
Thank you Chair and thank you Rosemary for coming this far and putting this question from your area to myself. This topic was very key focus in the last report from the County Director of Public Health, which focused not only on consequences of social isolation but also highlighted the work that is taking place across in terms of social, political and economic dimensions. The impact on people's lives can lead to social isolation. The Health and Wellbeing Board for the county has also considered this issue of social isolation and loneliness and are an important and growing health challenge for County Durham population, which we can have a significant negative effect on health and wellbeing across the course of a person's life. People with stronger social networks are more likely to be healthier and happier by souls with weaker social networks can become isolated and as a result more likely to experience poor physical and mental health and increased reliance on health and care services. Social isolation is identified as an action in the County Durham joint and wellbeing strategy and the board is working alongside area action partners to focus on this issue. Within the council, one of our commitments is to build on the principles of wellbeing, building stronger communities, prevention and social value. Through this approach, we are able to target resources to meet the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. Initiatives already identified by your Durham Valley Partnership are very much in keeping with our approach to a more inclusive community based upon caring for the most vulnerable people in the county. The key role for the partnership is to continue to focus on prevention and community-based solutions which build resilience and capacity to meet the needs. Encouraging and promoting the involvement of individuals with a near cause in the core production of service responses which meet the needs of people in locality is essential. Officers within the county, children and adult services would be keen to work with members of the AAP to pursue the development of such initiatives and I have personally asked officers to reach officers and to support the partnership to explore practical ways that we can work to move on this important issue. Thank you Rosemary.
Thank you for that Counselor Hollins. Can I now, as ordinary, to ask her second question from the Durham County Action Partnership?
Thank you Madam Jay. The second question is, through the Durham Valley Partnership's employment, education and training task group, a strong emphasis is being placed on supporting the development of higher level science, technology, engineering and STEM skills and qualifications for young people in the fields of creative industries, financial, professional and business services, digital industries and life sciences. This focus reflects the proposed approach of the North Eastern Combined Authorities Economic and Regeneration Advisory Board. What are the council's plans for supporting this development at a local level within Durham Valley?
Thank you for that. Can I ask Counselor Neil Foster to respond?
Thank you Chairman. And can I first of all thank Rosamond for giving the opportunity to comment on the support agenda? There are three key points that I would like to make. Firstly, as you know, the right of working with business is on this agenda. The regular programme that we employ, we contain the leaders, we engage with businesses...
The regular programme that we employ will contain the leaders, we engage with businesses from all different types of sectors, including STEM, to encourage them to recruit new apprentices and trainees, as well as support and tackle the higher level of needs. This has seen a support for any STEM employers in town to be liked. Over the last four years, we've created 155 STEM-related apprenticeships, and we still have £2,000 of funding available to support employers create STEM-related apprenticeships in the Durham Valley area. We have previously conducted a survey with engineering and manufacturing businesses across County Durham to identify what their future skills need, as well as their recruitment plans. We've continued to engage and support these employers. Secondly, based on the feedback from employers and the Economy Enterprise Committee, we have a forthcoming programme looking to encourage the technical IRL skills among STEM employers across the county. We've a strong focus on STEM employers. This programme is currently waiting for funding approval, which we hope to start delivering in the coming months. And finally, in terms of roots of young people, through the Net Bar Now each programme, schools have been able to participate in a wide range of STEM activities. These have included science and technology-related talks, teacher, teachers, seniors, and visiting FAM itself. Through some of these methods, the enterprise competition for technical skills has had a STEM-related theme for the past three years. Schools participating in the competition have taken part in STEM workshops delivered by industry professionals. During the competition, schools have partnered with businesses to help them develop their business IVs. Both Durham Academy, Constance Academy, St Bate, Tangle Skills, have all participated in the leadership of the committees, and attended the STEM outreach events. By engineering, Lancaster Dairies and Debs are among those businesses who have participated to the programme, all thanks to that.
Thank you for that, councillor Foster. That concludes questions from the AAPs. Thank you for submitting the questions that you were attending to make. Item number six, questions from the public. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services to explain the procedure, please?
Thank you, chairman. There are two members of the public scheduled to ask questions. One is Trillian Eisen, and the other is Sue Dixon. I'm not sure if they're here.
Can I ask if you can identify yourself, which few of the former users here?
Well, the questions that they've asked will be replaced on the screen, but in accordance with the usual procedure of this council, a written response will be provided to both inquiries.
That concludes the item. Can I ask those for the members of the public to thank them for submitting their questions? And even though they're not here, they will go and respond. Item number seven, petitions from the public. Are there no petitions for consideration? Item number eight, the report from the cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Thank you, chairman. Chairman, this report from the cabinet tells decisions made at meeting hours in downtown Port on sixteenth to Sandown. Eisen's in view of the latest budget update. In this point, we were still in middle of the year about that settlement of the documents. And during the final figures and proposals, we all plan to come out, and then also to call council next meeting in February. However, this figure, the savings total, remains huge. More than £150 million already collected, which is estimated savings for the next four years, now in the order of £100 million, bringing the total to a high of £290 million, a situation completely without precedent. But, chairman, there are other items on the agenda as well. We're doing the very welcome program for partnership that we put together over recent months, which we share on account of having a quality also any time. As ever, very happy to answer any questions or decisions. We will have time to respond. Thank you.
No questions have been submitted in advance. Does any member have any question on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? Item number nine, community governance review. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services to present the report, please?
Thank you, chairman. This is to advise council on the outcome of the consultation thus far on this community governance review, and to advise council of the recommendation of the constitution working group. On the 23rd of September, council undertook, agreed to undertake a community governance review, and it was on two options related to Pelton Fell. Option one was to make the unparished area of Pelton Fell into a parish council now a community council, and option two was to make no change. On page 22 of the agenda, council will note that 900 consultation documents were sent out to the effective properties. There wasn't a positive response, 110 responses received, 62 of those responses voted for option one, 48 had opted for no change. There's a summary on the comments received as set out on page 22 of the table. The law and guidance which council have taken into account in dealing with this matter is set out on page 23. The key factors that councils are taking into account to secure the community governance within the area under review reflects the identities of the communities and is effective and convenient. Table on page 29 under paragraph 17 sets out a summary of factors for the establishment of a parish council in the context of this particular consultation. When these factors were presented to the constitution working group on the 8th of December, the conclusion from the consultation was thought to be very finely balanced, and constitution working group agreed to make a recommendation to council that a further consultation be undertaken on the two options, no change, and the establishment of a parish council set out in more detail in appendix two of the report. This would require council to give agreement to change the timetable originally agreed, and the revised timetable is set out in the table on paragraph 19, page 30. The recommendations on paragraph 20, page 31, which is that council resorts to undertake a further consultation and that the timetables are ended.
Thank you for that. Can I move it to the report, please? Councillor Neil.
Thank you, chairman. Following the community governance review of Pelton Fell, feedback from the consultation, which has already been stated well, was a relatively low response rate of 12%. It's probably inconclusive. We discussed it at the constitution working group, and the constitution working group's view is therefore that the council defers making a decision pending a further six weeks consultation process, and that timetable is set out in the report. We're hoping a clear mandate, either in favour or not, will be the outcome of that, chairman, and that the recommendations are set out in paragraph 17 of the report.
Thank you for that, councillor Neil. Councillor Marshall.
May I just forward my second report?
Does any member have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the amendment terms of reference for the review and that further period of consultation be undertaken? Item number 10, motions on notice. We have two motions for today's meeting carried out from the previous meeting. I'll date them in the order detailed on the agenda. The motions will be displayed on the screens at the relevant point. Can I now invite councillor Moore Temple to move his motion, please?
Thank you, chair. This debate should have taken place a month ago. It didn't. I understand from correspondence that the council's leader thought it was inappropriate, a position he may hold to this day. But in my view, what is truly inappropriate is for this council to send out proposals to many hundreds of loyal members of staff, saying that it intends to tear up their contracts and replace them with part-time contracts, cutting their pay by between 10% and 25%. What is truly inappropriate is that these proposals didn't come from the political leadership of this council, but came from its officers. We know that's true because head teachers had been informed of them, and letters had been prepared for staff whilst councillors were still in the dark. And what is appropriate is for us to consider some facts about the proposals which were sent out in our name, and in the light of those facts, to have them withdrawn. So here they are, the facts as approved by our own HR department. If these proposals go through, any teaching assistant who had a contract in 2012 will lose between 10% and 25% of their pay. Fact two, some classroom teachers have already lost pay under the single status pay arrangements, arrangements we passed here as a once-and-for-all settlement of pay equality issues. Fact three, some teaching assistants have pay so low that it has to be boosted by the application of the Durham Living Wage. So if their contracts are replaced with part-time contracts, their annual earnings will be below the breadline. And there's another shocking fact. 94% of these people are women. So these proposals will cut the pay of nearly 2,500 women across this county at a stroke, widening the gender pay gap that we were led to believe single status pay would lessen. It beggars belief. And the proposals are based on two myths. The first myth is that teaching assistants only work 32 and a half hours a week. They don't, any more than teachers only work 32 and a half weeks. And the second myth is that if you work in a classroom every day of the school year, every day the school is open and the children are there, you're still a part-time member of staff. If that's the case, every teacher in this country is a part-timer. Now, I know that classroom assistants are not teachers. They have lower levels of qualification and they have lower pay. But it's teachers who they're teamed up with every day in the same classrooms, teaching the same pupils. Teachers and teaching assistants are a team. A good teaching assistant enables a good teacher to be an even better teacher. But if these proposals go ahead, we will widen the pay differential between teachers and teaching assistants. We will divide and damage the team, and that will damage the children. School governors know how damaging these proposals are, and that's why many of them are so angry about proposals they're expected to support whilst having had no hand in shaping them, even though they consider them to be ill-conceived and destructive. And that's why we need to take these proposals off the table. As long as they're on the table, they will promote the myths of short hours and part-time attendance. As long as they're on the table, the consultation will be about how much we cut the pay of teaching assistants by, not about how we address inequality. So I call on you all to take this decision back into the hands where it should have started, the political leadership of this council.
Just 30 seconds, please, councillor.
I ask you to vote for a motion and put this decision back, as I say, in the hands of the political leadership where it should have come from.
Thank you for that. I've got a second for the motion.
Thank you. The collective agreement of 2004, which is the basis of the current terms and conditions for teaching assistants, was brought in by Durham County Council for a reason. Not only did it align the role with that of the nursery nurse, but it recognised the role of the teaching assistant and how closely it had become linked to that of the class teacher and their contribution to children's education. Without the support of these people working with intervention groups, supporting our pupils and teachers, our schools would struggle. Long gone are the days when a teaching assistant's job largely consisted of washing paint cards, putting displays up, and doing general administration. They are now required to have professional qualifications, regular training, and continued professional development. Furthermore, nothing has changed in employment law since we went through single status in 2012/13. So why then was it acceptable then? Do we need to look at it and change it now? I formally second this motion and asking council to withdraw the current proposals.
Thank you, councillor. Does anybody, any member wish to speak on the motion as printed? On the motion as printed? Can I, councillor Otten?
Yes, madam chair. Certainly, the proposal by councillor Moore Temple offers this council an alternative to what is being proposed, which threatens the soundings and conditions of teacher assistants. We all agree we're extremely hard and totally committed to teaching our children with steadfast commitment. Certainly said, chair, and the council has to be reminded about that this proposal does come from the corporate management team, which is no constitution, chair. No elected members sit on it. A proposal that only this whole council can make is a signal, chair. I support the proposal.
Thank you for that. I understand that you would amend it, councillor Brown. Can you move your amendment, please?
Thank you, chair. I would like to start by saying I thank you absolutely for critical and ironic that this motion is being submitted by a member of the very opposition party that did not see fit for him to participate in a debate on the motion related to the trade union bill submitted at the last full council meeting. A bill that could potentially have an adverse effect on every trade union member in the whole country, including those working for Durham County Council. The League demonstrated their absolute contempt for these people by walking out of the chamber, not planning enough to even take part in the debate, never mind to show any support for the motion. However, here we are today, we're asked to believe that they have submitted this motion because they deeply care about one specific core element of our employees. A more cynical person would question this newly found conscience and just tell it's not a political point, so I must say. Not with some of this cynicism, chair. They have submitted this amendment because, as we are all aware, the council has commenced a consultation exercise with the teachers, the workforce, and with trade unions, who are the recognised representatives of the workforce. The processes at the early stages of the consultation exercise have been closed just prior to Christmas. At this time, no decisions have been made, and any decisions on the way forward will be a matter for the full council consideration at the appropriate point. In the meantime, feedback received in relation to alternative proposals made by the workforce and trade unions will need to be assessed and considered in advance of any decisions being taken. The next phase of activity will require the council to respond to the workforce and trade unions on the matters raised following an initial consultation exercise before considering the next step. School governors should, fully informed, teach us, be aware of the process. However, we must remember that if this council is a residual employer that will ultimately fund any associated financial liability, the employment matters of school-based employees suffer from reputational damage. Therefore, it is right that this full council will ultimately make any decision on this issue in the chamber. This can only be done when all consultation responses have been looked at and further discussions have taken place with trade unions and all other parties. Chair, I submit the amendment set out on the screen.
Thank you for that.
Hold your order, madam chair. It is a rule of council that an amendment which effectively negates a motion is not in order. This motion, the imperative word within it is withdraw. So this motion, unamended, asks for the proposals to be withdrawn. This amendment gets rid of the word withdraw, and therefore is effectively negativelying the motion, and therefore, in my opinion, is out of order, and I would ask you to rule this out of order, madam chair.
I don't think it, can be ruled out of order?
Madam Chair, I think you should consult with the legal officer.
Does it think, does it think the motion?
It's not. Of course, it's not. It's not.
It's not yet. The advice is that it does not negate the motion. Can I have a second to the amendment, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I second this amendment because, as my colleague has stated, it is Durham County Council who is the residual employer and who, in the event of equal pay claim, fund the liabilities and incur the reputational damage. Head teachers have been aware of this process right from the start, and should some governors feel that they have not been fully informed, then that is a matter for the governors to take up with the respective head teacher. It's not up to Durham County Council to consult with governing bodies. We will, however, as the amendment sets out, ensure that governing bodies are briefed on the current position as the consultation progresses.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that. Does any member have any questions on the amendment?
Councilor Meyer.
Yeah, thank you very much indeed. I was delayed on my arrival in the chamber, and I need to declare an interest which is not peculiar. Thank you.
What's your interest, school governor?
I'm a school governor on two schools, Miss Chair.
Right, Councilor Richard Bell.
Thanks, Chairman. I welcome the proposal in the amendment to brief governing bodies as to the current state of play, because I have to say, speaking as a school governor, I've heard divvily squat come through from the heads of my governing bodies, or indeed through to the governors. And I think, I don't actually understand the relationship between the teaching assistants, the county council and the school. Is the school the employer, or are we the employer that was liable for what? If the proposals went through, would the school units be given the budget to come by the county council and force the passport through? How would it all work? I think we are aware that contracts, I have a bit of a mess, there are two or possibly three versions of contracts kicking around them there, I think we are aware that things need charging up. Whether the proposal to actually revel down to the sort of the least generous terms is the right one is another question entirely, and therefore, I have a lot of sympathy with the actual motion about withdrawing the proposals while this is thrashed out properly. I do think councillors should have been briefed earlier. There was an opportunity, I think, was it one Friday evening last September, where we had hastily arranged a member briefing by Children's services on the issue of reallocation of resources between primary and secondary schools, and it would have been a relative difficult matter, I think, to slide again then and tell the councillors what was going on. So I welcome the opportunity for a briefing as to where we are. I would actually like to see some information as to what do other councils do, because those of us who don't really understand how these things work would like to know what other councils do both locally and nationally. And then whether, whichever route you go down, we are in a consultation, we haven't made a decision on this yet, whether you withdraw the consultation as per the motion or continue down the present path, I'm looking over mine. But certainly, the current proposals, as hard proposals to level down to the least generous terms, would seem to me to be not to be justified at the present time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that, Councilor Bell. Councilor Adam.
Thank you, Madam Meyer. In support of the amendment...
Chair.
Sorry, Chair, I do apologise. Although I'll be speaking in favour of the amendment as presented by my colleague, Councilor Brown, I was minded to support the original motion as presented by Councilor Temple, as I can see some merits in, as he puts it, to withdraw the current proposals, as I also find them to be unacceptable in their present form. However, on reflection, this motion actually asked the Cabinet to withdraw the proposals, then to discuss the proposals, which, in my reckoning, does not achieve or change the current position or resolve the issues raised by the TAs. Therefore, I would have to project on that basis. First, I would like to dispel some myths circulating in the media and social networks. This Labour group have not debated this issue prior to negotiations, and I have certainly not voted to cut salaries or working hours of TAs. And just as important, in my mind, the overwhelming majority of Labour members were unaware of the proposals to be put to teaching assistants. But that said, this council and Cabinet have made it perfectly clear that no decisions have been taken and that the proposals as out for consultation is currently following the democratic process through negotiations with the trade unions. Which, by the way, would be more difficult if the trade union bill goes through Parliament, as some of our opposition colleagues seems to see as a positive. Chair, I do fully appreciate that the proposal put to the TAs is unfair, unacceptable and an attack on living standards of respected, hard-working and experienced staff who are providing a valuable role in supporting the most vulnerable children in our schools. Let's not attack the low pay and be tarred with the same brush as our Tory counterparts. Our negotiators need to find a satisfactory compromise, negotiated to ensure TAs' working conditions are protected now and in the future.
That's forty seconds.
Therefore, this council has a responsibility to consider all presentations made by TAs and their representatives, and to continue to consult with governing bodies and review the current proposals to ensure we can maintain professional, experienced and valued staff who deliver an exceptional service year upon year. I support the amendment.
Councilor Sam Hennig.
Just two things I just wanted to comment on. I very much support what the amendment says in terms of the final decision of this will be made by full council. But, you know, as said before, in terms of appropriateness, let's be clear, it is of course fully appropriate that this is determined by full council, but it is also fully appropriate that all responses to the consultation should be thoroughly looked at. What is not appropriate is for hundreds of people to take their time to respond to a consultation, and then for the council to make its decision within twenty-four hours of that consultation closing, before any of them could be looked at. And I'm sorry, Councilor Temple, that is not appropriate, and that was the point I made. It was not appropriate to take the decision at that point, nor is it appropriate to take it today. It is appropriate that this council takes the final decision at that point, and I fully support the amendment. I do welcome what has been said by Councilor Temple and Councilor Adam in terms of clarification that these are not, as was originally stated in the motion, cabinet proposals, they haven't gone through a political process. They were, as is correctly stated, generated through HR, and clearly, they will be discussed at a council meeting where that decision will, any decision will be made, as it says in the amendment. But let's be absolutely clear, correctly as Councilor Adams has said, that no decisions on this have been made, no discussion in terms of the final options has even been made. But somewhere from that point, I have every confidence that many members will have their say before we get to that point, quite rightly. So it's completely appropriate that councillors do have their say, which will take place, as the amendment says, in the future, but that it was not appropriate to do that one day after the consultation closed in the middle of December. Thank you.
On a point of order, Chair, just in respect of the amendment, Chair, the amendment isn't proposing to withdraw the proposal by the corporate management team. All it's suggesting is a briefing on the proposals from the corporate management team. Could that be clarified, Chair?
It says what, sir. Let's hold on, Councilor Dixon.
Sir, thank you, Chair. I'm just concerned whether this actually motion is valid, because it asks to withdraw the current proposals, and as we have the debate now, we don't know what the current proposals are. We've had some negotiation points which were held for negotiation, consultation with all bodies, but at the moment, I don't know what the current proposals are, so I couldn't either vote for or against them, and I don't know what they are. So it's a nonsense motion in principle. We have to go with the amendment, so that when we do have some current proposals, we can actually debate, which it seems to be happening now, because we don't actually know what we're talking about. So I think it's incoherent, because we are in a position where we are waiting, having consulted, to have some proposals which we will then debate as appropriate, which is what the amendment says. Given the fact of the incoherence of this motion, we must ask what is at stake. I know there's election coming up, and I hope that we can decide what's going to happen in the next eighteen months, because it seems to be that we live down the same politics for people's lives, people's careers, and we need that education system, and therefore we need this amendment so that we can take the courage to debate in the future on this issue. Support the amendment.
Can I ask Councilor Temple to respond to the amendment, and then do a small, close debate on this amendment?
Thank you, Chair. I can't accept this amendment, because, as Councilor Martin said, it effectively negatives the proposal. It does not include withdrawal, in fact, it says we will not withdraw, which in my book is a negative. I am disappointed to have been accused of cynicism, hypocrisy and incoherence. I very carefully chose not to use any emotive terms, I did not use the name of any political party, and it's a shame that that's been brought into it. This motion should fall, and I ask you, sorry, the amendment should fall, and I hope you will vote it down.
I'm now going to open the vote on the amendment. For those in favour of the amendment, please press one. Those against the amendment, please press two. For those members wishing abstaining, please press three. If anyone accidentally voted the wrong way or wished to change their vote, all you have to do is press one, two or three to reach a CEO of a new vote, and nothing else. Excuse me, John, this, here, over here. His is not working. For the amendment seventy-four, against the amendment twenty-three, no abstaining. Colleagues, we now have a substantive motion before us. I will now take a vote on a substantive motion. For those in favour of the motion, please press one to select option one. Could you repeat what you said in the first place, please, Chair? Chair, can I just ask, are we voting on the motion as amended, please?
Point of order, Chairman, I intend to move immediately, this is the one I intend to move, that the standing orders be suspended to allow the debate on the other motion. Just, but I don't want to get into a mess in the middle of that vote.
Can I, can I make sure you vote, please, a small, close vote?
Chair, Chair, may I request help from the officers, because there's something going on with my one.
It's better television.